Proceed. Okay, alright. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The mayor and council work session for the month of September is now called to order. First order of business is a presentation from Mr. Coward, who is the superintendent of Carroll County Board of Education.
First of all, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank the city council and the city government here in Villarica for allowing us to be here today and share with you just a little bit. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce some of our employees and board members who are here with us. First, we have Rob Cleveland, who's a current board member from the Villarica district. Mr. Chris Gammont could not be here. And then we have incoming board member, Dr. Robert Pinkney, here with us also. From the district staff, we have assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, Dr. Dana Harmon. And from Villarica High School, our principal of Villarica High School, Mr. Glenn Harding, is here to join us also. So, we appreciate them being here. And again, we appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to be here with you today to share. Our board is currently engaged in efforts for the second consecutive year to try to reach what's called distinguished board certification. That's a standard process where boards of education can seek recognition for taking the right steps to do the right work for children in their districts. The first level is called a quality board, and we were that two years ago. This past year, we reached the distinguished board, and we're at that level again this year, and there are certain steps that we have to take, one of which is to do something different each year in the area of outreach, engagement, involvement of our community, and seeking input from our community relative to what we're doing as a school district. So, our effort this year was decided that we would go to all of our municipalities that we serve, starting here in Villarica. This is the first one. We'll go to Bowden, Temple, Mount Zion, Whitesburg, Rootville. We'll go visit with the county commissioners at a meeting. We'll go to the chamber to do an executive board meeting there. And just to give a quick overview of where the system is, and also maybe open it up with some questions that maybe you as a group have for us relative to the direction of the school district or anything that may be happening in the school district. So, that's my purpose here today, and I'm going to try to be brief and respectful of your time. But I'd like to start with a general overview of where the system is and how that affects Villarica and the Villarica community. Four years ago, our school board worked through a process of determining our vision as a school district, and our current vision statement says that we'll be recognized as a premier school district. There was a lot of work, a lot of engagement in the community that was involved in reaching that vision, but since that vision was established, we've taken a lot of different steps to try to move our district forward and to better provide opportunities for the students and the community that they live in. A big part of that is a recognition that historically, as you think about the past when it came to the Carroll County school system, we were looked at more as a system of school rather than a school system. And what I mean by that is, we had twenty-something schools, and we had pockets of excellence or islands of this, but very seldom did the group as a whole come together in a unified way maybe to act in a common direction. And the school board has directed us to work towards a more unified process as a part of our effort to be a premier school district. So, our discussion with you today, to me, dovetails well into that particular effort because we believe we've made a lot of strides over the last five or six years in unifying the direction of the school district and trying to better reach and help every portion of our community that we serve. Obviously, when you serve a number of municipalities, it's much harder than it is if you have just one municipality that you work with as a local board of education. When I came on board in 2010, the very first public meeting that I was involved in happened at the Villarica dining room. We came up at that point in time, actually, we were starting a process to talk about the SPOLOST extension, but it was a great effort, and it was a great crowd that night, and we used it to more or less listen to the community and ask, you know, what is it the Villarica community sees that you need, mainly in the area of facilities that night? But it kind of expanded beyond facilities, and there was a lot of discussion about many other things, and that has served us well as we try to move over the last five or six years. So, let me talk a little bit about where we're at relative to the Villarica Cluster Schools, because I know that's where your main interest may lie. Let's start with enrollment. On day ten, when we took our enrollment count that day, our district had an enrollment of fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven students. It was the fourth consecutive year that our enrollment had started to grow again. After the economy tanked around 2008, '09, '10, our enrollment stalled for a couple of years, and then all of a sudden, now we've started to grow again. But when you look at Villarica schools during that period of time, on day ten, the Villarica schools had an enrollment of five thousand five hundred and seven students. That's thirty-seven percent of the students that Carroll County serves are enrolled in the Villarica schools. As a system, we're up six hundred and sixty-two students over the last four years. The Villarica Cluster is up two hundred and forty-four students in that same period of time when you look at the Villarica schools. Since 2011, when the SPOLOST extension went into place, Carroll County's school system has invested thirty-four million eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in facilities in the Villarica schools. In addition to the facilities improvements that, you know, right at thirty-five million dollars, a lot of money's gone into technology, fine arts, band, equipment, and other things of that nature for our classrooms. The most recent investment of the school system in the Villarica area has been the opening of our North College and Career Academy campus, and many of you have already seen that campus, and if you haven't, we invite you out. There's going to be a grand opening in a few weeks, and we'll get that date to you so that you can hopefully visit us on that date. But we're so excited about this for a couple of reasons. The first reason is it really helps our children in the north end of the county, specifically Villarica and Temple, in that now, instead of having to get on a bus, drive thirty-something minutes down to Carrollton, take a class, and then get back on the bus thirty-something minutes back, which my math is not really good, but that's over an hour of time instructionally each day that they didn't spend in a classroom, they were spending on a school bus. And because of this facility that the board has invested in, now they walk out the door, and thirty seconds later, they're in this new facility. If it's a Temple student, they get on a bus still, but instead of riding thirty-something minutes, they ride about seven minutes, and they're in the facility. But there's a second reason that we're so excited about this facility and the investment here in the Villarica area, and that's that the commitment that our board has made to given students multiple paths towards graduation and given more than one opportunity to get there. And we believe that the applied learning that happens in our college and career campuses is one way that we do that. We're the only, we're actually the first school district in Georgia to have two campuses. Nobody else in Georgia has that. And so, that commitment is huge. That facility is totally locally funded, the state has no dollars involved in that facility at all. So, that was the commitment of our board, along with our taxpayers through our SPOLOST, to do something that is really, really powerful for students. And we'll see the power of that in the next piece of data that I want to share with you. That's about, when we're measured as a school system, the thing that people look at first is our graduation rate. The bottom line, you know, when we take children and we move them through our school system, elementary, the middle, and high, how many of them at the end of the day do we graduate? Now, when we graduate, we want to graduate them ready to go out into the workforce or go to post-secondary or join the military, whatever it may be, and that's our goal, is to get a hundred percent of them in that direction. Over the last five years, we've gone as a district from sixty-seven percent as a graduation rate to eighty-five percent as graduation. And there's no doubt in our mind, the investment in the college and career academies and also our Twelve for Life facility is a big reason that that has happened, not the only reason, but is a big reason. But what about, again, the Villarica Cluster? What has it meant for Villarica? And when you look at graduation for the Villarica Cluster, five years ago, there was sixty-eight point eight percent. Villarica High School this year was eighty point six percent. So, Villarica High School, just like our other high schools, has shown significant improvement in the graduation rate, and Mr. Harding and his team there at Villarica High School are very committed to continue to improve that number. It's very important for us as, from the board perspective, to continue to do that. But beyond just graduation rate, let me share a couple of other things that I think excites you as leaders of this community. Dual enrollment, move on when ready, you may have heard that phrase, where students can take college credit courses while in high school, has really increased over the last two years because of legislation that changed two years ago. It is a great opportunity for students. It happens, they can go to University of West Georgia, they can go to West Georgia Technical College, they can get dual enrollment classes in our college and career academies, and now, starting this year, they can actually take college classes in their high school buildings. So, we've made great strides, and for Villarica High School, what that has meant is they've improved their dual enrollment numbers by six hundred percent in the last five years. Six hundred percent in the last five years. And it's, that number is going to grow again this year. Been talking to Mr. Harding, we know that that's going to be the case. Now, academics is our core business. That's the number-one thing that we're supposed to focus on, and we do, but we also recognize that educating and providing success for the whole child is very important. So, we focus not only on academics, we also focus on the arts and athletics, and we're proud to say that in the Villarica Cluster, if you go to our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools, there's an emphasis on the arts. The board has been very specific with me that we continue to invest in the arts, including getting art and music teachers back into our elementary schools, which we have done this year, but more in the way of trying to encourage more kids to get involved in that. Additionally, athletics across the Villarica Cluster and across our school district have continued to improve, and there's a commitment for that to continue to happen. Now, these things don't happen in isolation. We've been very fortunate to have a great partnership with many entities in our community, and one of those entities is Villarica City. And an example is, two years ago, when y'all came to us and you wanted to increase the number of resource officers that we have in our Villarica schools. And the exciting part about that is that it was an outreach from you as an entity to say that this is something we want to do. We want to help you to make sure that our schools are safe. And because of that, now, not only do we have, I think, two resource officers at Villarica High School, we have a resource officer at Glant Heinzman and at Villarica Elementary, and we're appreciative of that, and that's an example of how we've partnered together to better help what's happening here for our Villarica students. Another example of partnership has been the Communities and Schools Program. If you haven't heard about this, it's something that's worth listening to, talking to Mr. Harding and Ms. Shealy, who's at Villarica High School, but this group, who supports all Carroll County schools, not just Villarica schools, five years ago, put a site coordinator in Villarica High School. And there's no doubt in my mind, and I think Mr. Harding would agree with it, that this position has been a big part of helping improve the graduation rate here at Villarica High School, because what that position does beyond a counselor or a graduation facilitator, that person works with the students who may be working hard to get towards graduation, they've got some obstacles, but they've also got some obstacles in their personal life, and they need support even outside of the school, and the Communities and Schools Program works to try to give support beyond the school boundaries and the school campus. And so, that's another example of how partnership has been so valuable. Couple of other pieces of data I want to get to before I get towards the closing here. Over the same five-year period here in the Villarica Cluster, we've increased our number of community business partners by seventy-six. We're at two hundred and thirty-four community business partners in our Villarica schools. This past year, our Villarica schools logged thirty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty adult volunteer hours in their schools. People talk about parents not being engaged in school. People don't realize how much engagement we actually do have and how schools, how hard our schools work. But another figure that I'm just extremely impressed with is, we had talked to our schools a couple of years ago about the importance of teaching our students to give back to their community and to learn through service what it is to be a citizen, and our schools now have a focus from K-12 to teaching our kids how to do that. And this last year, the Villarica Cluster logged over six thousand seven hundred student volunteer hours for the community here in Villarica. So, that's also important. And obviously, the real measure is how do the parents feel about the schools in the Villarica Cluster? On our annual survey that was widely involved with parents, ninety-six percent of the parents surveyed said that they felt that their children received a quality education in the Villarica schools. So, we're very proud of what the board has done to help us invest in the Villarica community, to invest in the schools here, and today, by being here to share this with you, we hope that you will take, help us take the next step. And by that, what I mean is that this process of us being a distinguished board means that we need to partner even more. And we asked Mr. Milliron to send you an electronic survey. It's a three-question survey that I hope each of you got, and if not, that you will get. We asked that you complete this and send it back. It's done electronically and all that kind of good stuff, so you don't have to send anything in. But our board will be having a plan in advance in late October, and what our board wants to do is to look at what we need to do now. We've really worked hard over the last five years, but what do we do, need to do now in the next three to five years? What are the things we need to focus on? And we need input from our partners. We need input from the city of Villarica, the city of Bowden, the city of Temple, the people that work very hard every day to partner with us to make sure our school system is very, very good. So, I hope that you will complete that. Now, in conclusion, I left two items for you at your place. The first one is a report from the Villarica Cluster Schools. They had their cluster celebration night, I think, two weeks ago, and a great evening. I know, Mr. Bass, you were able to be there, and it was a great, great evening where our Villarica schools shared with community and parents the good things that are happening. And I hope when you have time that you'll look through that because it contains me of the data points that I referenced tonight, as well as others, about what's happening in the Villarica schools. The second one, and this is hot off the press, we actually picked it up from a printer who printed it in Villarica, this was printed in Villarica, by the way, and this is, you're the first group to actually get to see this. We'll be sharing this in each of our visits as we go around. This is our district annual report. And it lays out a message about where we have moved as a school district and where we want to move. And when our board adopted that vision of being recognized as premier school district, we, as a school district, as far as the employees, we took that and kind of synthesized that into a tagline, and it's very simple, and it's easy for everybody to remember. What that means is we need premier teachers, premier leaders, and premier schools. If we have those things, we will be recognized as a premier school district. So, we're working very hard, and we're very proud of the information that we have to share with you and other parts of the Carroll County community relative to how the Carroll County school system is doing. With that, Ms. Marshman, that ends my presentation. I'll be glad to entertain questions, if there are any that the city council has or something that you would like to share with us verbally. If not, of course, we hope that you will complete the survey online for us.
Well, we thank you for your presentation, and we will take that in consideration. Does any council member have remarks or comments or questions?
You always have remarks and comments.
Yeah.
You said something about the dual enrollment at high school throughout the high schools in Carroll County, and I guess all over the western part of Georgia. Dual enrollment with West Georgia, does that have a big effect on the AP classes that are taught in high school?
It does to a degree. What we have found is our AP enrollment has decreased a little bit, but those kids who are going to take dual enrollments are also normally taking AP classes too. So, they wind up still doing both. It's not like they totally choose one over the other most of the time. So, but when you take the AP enrollment and you plug it with the dual enrollment, what we are now doing is serving more kids in more advanced and rigorous classrooms. So, that, the goal of doing that is really good, and the thing about dual enrollment for parents, if their child is going to stay in Georgia and they're going to attend a college or university in Georgia, it is a great deal because those classes are going to count for them, and they're going to go in ahead of wherever it is they might have gone in without that. So, it is a great opportunity to get that college experience, get it in a very secure way, and that's one of the reasons I mentioned, that this year, they don't have to just go to the university or go to West Georgia Technical College. We're actually teaching it in classrooms on Villarica High School's campus, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Glenn?
We're actually, we're actually not off, aren't there all of them?
Well, some of our schools are, and we want to get to where we're doing it. At the college and career academy side, they are having dual enrollment classes there.
All right. The next question then becomes, and for some of you folks who don't understand this, AP is a highest-level class that you can take in high school in a specific area. It's just below or even equal to a college-level class. If a kid goes from Villarica High School as a senior, goes into West Georgia and takes an English class, he does good on the AP, he makes a four or five, which is high level, he goes in and takes, he don't have to take freshman English, he takes English higher than freshman English. Now, the question then becomes, in college, and Coach, you might hit me on this one, in college, you've got four years, or got five years to play four years of athletics, yet you will graduate sooner if you take all these accelerated classes, which means now that kid has to be in a master program or a T-six program to be able to continue his athletic endeavors. Is that correct?
Most likely, yes. In fact, you know, that's, you've seen the explosion of the number of kids who finished their fourth year but have a fifth year of eligibility in master's program, and remember that at the college level, they get to choose. They can go to another college to be eligible immediately to do that, and that's, that's an example of how that's exploding.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, he answered one of my questions. I was going to ask what was the AP class, but Mr. Bass answered that. But anyway, we have a student at our church, Amari Ephraim, you know, she does the dual thing, and it seems to be helping her, so, you know, I think we need to encourage more children to do the dual enrollment to, you know, it helps them a lot.
Well, we support the dual enrollment, and we support advanced placement. Both of them are good, and just each child has to make the choice because they can actually get college credit for, you know, the advanced placement classes if they score above a three on the test there. Our main goal is to get them into more rigorous, advanced classes that are going to challenge them to really to reach their limits academically, and that's, that's our goal, whether it's advanced placement, whether it's dual enrollment, or whether it's something else. A lot of folks don't realize that many of our most gifted academic students are now going to our college and career academy, they're taking our engineering program. We have an advanced engineering program through our college and career academy, where a student who wants to go to Georgia Tech or Kennesaw or Auburn, any of these that have engineering as a main thrust, they can get an internship in civil engineering, electronic engineering, mechanical engineering across our county through that. So, that's an example. We have broadcast journalism, we have IT, the number of things that our academic kids are deciding, hey, I can get my academics as well as get a pathway skill at the same time that's going to help me better be better prepared for college and life after college.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Again, thank you for letting us come. We look forward to partnering with you many, many ways in the future, and please complete our survey, okay?
Thank you, and thank you for coming and sharing those with us. All right. If nothing else about our illustrious school, we will go to A, which is finance, well, is hefty.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm bringing the proposed 2016 budget amendments. You have seen several throughout the year for specific projects, for land purchases and things. These are after seven, almost eight months through the year, well, for eight months now, but when I prepared this. Just seeing where we stood and where we needed some amendments. This first page kind of summarizes in total the main projects that I'm highlighting, but that first section is when I need to transfer between funds, and in order to do that, there I'll be increasing in expense, for instance, in an account, and then if I'm bringing funds in from another fund, bringing money in from another fund, I have to increase the revenue. So, even though it's just within different funds, it increases revenue and expense in the different funds. So, the first one is, we're transferring a vacant position, the operator in training, like, was in water treatment, that was not hired, so we're moving it to Main Street.
I got a question on that one. Why do we have an open position that no one was hired for?
I can answer that. It actually came up when the council was presented with the tourism opportunities. When we hired the new public works director, obviously, we knew that we had already shut down operations of water, so it didn't make sense to hire staff while a plant was in a restoration mode and we were treating our reservoirs. Flip side of that is also with our public works director, we had actually got a dual Class One certified, Class One operator for water and also wastewater treatment, so our public works director is also now serving as our current operator in charge.
Okay. Why do we want to move to Main Street?
The council approved a agreement with the downtown development authority for tourism, and as part of that agreement, there was a approval of a staff person that would actually flow with that money, and that I instructed to the council that we actually would not do an increase in FTE. We had a vacant position that we were going to move over in order to facilitate that contract.
All right. Next is, we had the vehicles for the inmate crews, I believe it was two. We had budgeted to purchase them, but our public works department was able to do repairs on the vehicles we had. So, with the savings of almost thirty thousand dollars, we transferred that to the police department for the purchase of a vehicle. Next, this is in, this is in regards to the health insurance cost increase we've had. I found room in each of the four divisions, administration, public works, police, and recreation. I was able to make room in each of those budgets to absorb those costs. The only issue was that within public works, several of the departments cross funds in general fund and the water sewer fund, and I need to transfer money between those departments, but they are all public works departments, and that's, again, to cover the increased health insurance costs. Next is the, this is a transfer from the contingency fund in relation to the 2017 CDVG project. I have left about sixty-five thousand dollars in contingency for something you'll see later on in the agenda relating to the North Loop project. Next, these are increases in revenues and expense. The first one is our water purchases from Carroll County Water Authority. I'm projecting to be about five hundred thousand dollars over budget because we were purchasing from them one hundred percent during January through July, so we need to increase the budget for that.
How much did it cost us per thousand?
Per thousand, I'm not sure.
From the Carroll County?
About $1.62 per unit.
And we're charging three sixty-one per thousand for the city? About two dollars a difference per thousand?
Our base fee is seventeen dollars.
So, why do we need five hundred thousand dollars?
Because we have spent that much, almost that much, in purchasing water this year.
But if we're going to do that, don't we get that much money, more money back?
Yes, I'm increasing our revenue as well, so I'm going to increase revenue and increase Next is an increase in the budget for bond agent fees that were not budgeted. This is six thousand dollars. We have to pay our BB&amp;T, which is our bond agent for our bonds, and I think it was fifty-five hundred, so I've rounded it up to six thousand. And again, we'll, we'll raise revenue for that, to offset that. And the last section, this is the only one I have, is use for reserves. This, we had an increase in legal fees this year due to some unexpected items. We had the resignation of the mayor and the interim mayor, we have the charter review, and we had some property tax issues that have brought in more legal expense. That's thirty thousand dollars that I was not able to absorb in the budget, so I'm asking that we use reserve for that.
Aren't we saving a bunch of revenue because we're not having to pay the mayor? Is it his expense?
Not very much.
Plus, we're short one representative.
Yes, and those...
If you include the insurance and all that, it'll amount to quite a bit.
It's actually not that much, but I have used that for other things, to absorb other costs within the budget.
To highlight on that, basically, in order to absorb the approximate hundred and fifty thousand dollars of insurance costs for the second half, we have actually, wherever we've had what we call dark time on elected officials or employees, we have basically gone in and scraped off that money and made interdepartmental transfers so that we can cover that cost. So, when I presented the insurance increases to the council, when I said that we ought to be able to absorb that within the budget year, what we're doing is basically, any, any position that's unfilled or a delay in filling it, or, and then all associated costs, whether it's insurance, pension, benefits, et cetera, all of that that's budgeted is getting scraped off in order to... all of that that's budgeted is getting scraped off in order to make ends meet, if you will.
The next pages just highlight in total what the change would be to each fund. Change to revenue, for instance, in the general fund. This would increase the revenue by 38,000. And again, what I was saying was, it's not necessarily a revenue, someone's not gonna hand you, hand us a check for that, but it's the way we have to show the transfer. So it's revenue from the other fund to bring in that position. The next section is the total expenditures. The change in the general fund would be 68,197. And you can see the different projects that we've already discussed. And in order to balance that, you can see the use of fund balance or reserve for 30,000.
Oh, that $30,000 legal expense increase, what did that go for?
That is primarily related to the items related to the charter review, to the issues involving changing the charter when we went through the problem with.
The interim mayor.
Vacancies in office. I will say this, I'm always extremely aware of what the legal budget is. And I'm sorry that it hasn't been higher, but it's just mainly attributable to a lot of extra stuff we've had to do this year.
The quickie changes we had to do for the interim mayor position and things like that?
I'll do everything in my power to hold costs down as much as I can.
Well, I know you will.
The budget for legal fees is somewhat reactive to what happens to us. But I did want you to know that I'm aware of it. I pay attention to it and I do what I can to keep it down.
Okay.
Well, I don't see anything on the immediate horizon that makes me think that there will be a continuation of increased expenses. But you never know in this world when you're gonna get sued.
Next page, this is the, oh, I don't have that on the front. Whoops, okay. This is the hotel motel. I'll add that to the summary. But with hotel motel, with the change in the tourism board, it used to be split 60/40, where we sent them 60 and we kept 40%. And it has switched, so I had to make the change in that. But also looking at projections for the year, and you'll see it on my next summary, but the hotel revenue is coming in higher than we budgeted. So I'm increasing revenue by 25,000. And then the other lines are adjusting for that 40/60 split that I was talking about. Okay, next is the, this is the water sewer fund. These are the same projects we discussed on the summary page. You can see the total revenue increase would be 530,000, mostly due to the water purchases.
Hold on a second, let's back up, back up second please.
To where?
Back page.
Hotel?
Hotel motel.
Tourism board, move budget for vacant positions in water plant to Main Street. I thought that was 38,000 instead of 58,000.
Oh, that should say move budget. That's remove, we used to send it to the tourism board. We're no longer sending it to the tourism board. I'm sorry, that's the wrong description. It's, we've now, we're now sending it to the CVB. So that's a total removal of what we had budgeted to send the tourism board. So now below it, you can see that now the split is between the CVB and the.
I thank you.
All right. Next is the water sewer fund, and.
You say it increased in projected revenue. That's, that's not a $290,000 increase, is it?
It's an increase in what we've budgeted, yes.
So our revenue is gonna be 290,000 more than we thought it was gonna be?
That's what we, we have, that's what we're projecting.
And the sewer fees are gonna put another $216,000 in over what we projected?
Correct.
That's enough to pay for $500,000 worth of Carroll County water?
Yes. And the expenditures, an increase of 530,000. Those are the projects we discussed, the water purchases, CDVG, bond agent fees. And lastly is the solid waste fund. This is one of those interfund transfers I was talking about between public works departments to cover the change in the healthcare, the health insurance cost. So it's just a wash on the expenditure side. Any questions on that?
Not yet. Just be patient.
Next is the financial update for July. This and the August check register are now on the website. And you can see in July, after seven months, we're 58% through the year. On the top left, our total cash at the end of July, this is cash and investments, is 8.7 million dollars. Our outstanding bond principal is 33. almost $4 million. And the unrestricted net position, which is our reserve, and that's citywide, as of our last audit, is seven, almost seven and a half million dollars. Going down to the revenue status, these are our major sources of revenue for the city. And again, I was saying, seven months through the year is 58%. You can kind of keep that number in mind. But you can see compared to the prior year, most of these revenue streams are higher than last year, with the exception of our fines and forfeitures, which is down 1% compared to last year. Property tax, that'll start coming in later in the fall. Go down to the next box, on the bottom left, that's our budget status. Those are the major funds in total, general fund, water sewer fund, and solid waste fund. You can see the budget, the year-to-date revenue and expense, and then the percentage of budget. So you can see the revenue percentage for the general fund. We're only at 32% because we still have our property taxes, our insurance premiums, and our franchise fees that are gonna come in at the end of the year. But all the, you can see, compared to last year, revenue is up in all the funds. And expense is, in the general fund, is slightly less than last year. And our water fund, expense is higher because of the water purchases. If you look at the graph, in July, the yellow line is where we are at this point. And so far, we're trending above the prior year. Any questions on that?
We're 10 and above, is that good?
All right, change topics for now. We're gonna talk about 2016 property taxes. David can fill in where he sees fit. All right, we go to the next slide. So some of this is just kind of informative, some definitions. First, property taxes, you may also hear them referred to as ad valorem tax. Ad valorem means according to value. So we pay property tax based on the value of your property. All real property and personal property are taxable unless they have been exempted. And real property is considered land and anything that is affixed to the land. Personal property is anything that's not real estate. Anything you want to add to that? All right. How is the property assessed? We are in two counties, so we have two board of assess, tax assessors that we are dealing with, Carroll County and Douglas County. Each year, the board of tax assessors is required to review the assessed value for property tax purposes. They should, and this is from the Department of Revenue, they should annually review the value, the property values compared to the sales. And if they're too high or too low, they need to make that adjustment. Keep going. So why do we pay property taxes? Property taxes are the largest source of revenue in the general fund for the city of Villarica. And if you go on to the next one, this chart shows percentage-wise our revenue sources for the general fund. And you can see property tax, is that right? Section 23% of our revenue source in the general fund is property tax. Keep going. But what do my property tax dollars pay for? So, the general fund pays for our city administration, which is the council, city manager, city clerk, finance, HR, and our city attorney. Additionally, the general fund, keep going, it pays for our police. Right now, we have 46 officers and three reserve officers. That 46 includes our detectives, it includes our K-9 unit, and our school resource officers. The general fund and property taxes also pay for public works on the next slide. Property taxes pay for new laptops? Property taxes pays for public works. This is not to be confused with water and sewer company, that's separate. But this is our street and sidewalk repairs, road improvements, stormwater improvements, street lights, street sweeping, mowing. And I put trash pickup, but that's not garbage pickup, that's litter pickup and just kind of general cleanliness of the city. Next, the general fund also pays for recreation. Parks, library, senior center. And one example is the Fourth of July fireworks, which we all enjoy. Yes, there are revenues that we get for sports and activities and things, but that doesn't cover all of it. The general fund covers some of it as well. And lastly, the general fund also pays for community development, planning and zoning, code enforcement. We, I think today, we had another code enforcement officer start. So that just gives you a picture of what the general fund covers. And again, property taxes only pays for 23%, but you can see that that's, makes a big impact. Keep going, all right. What is, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Lisa. Okay, tax digest, what is the tax digest? You hear that term, you see it in the paper. This is a listing of all the property assessments and the exemptions. We also call it the consolidation sheets. The, and the assessed property, I mean, sorry, the assessed value is 40% of fair market value of the property. The millage rate, this is your tax rate. This is what's been established by the governing authority. In our case, it's the city. But if you look at your tax bill, you also have a rate from the county, the school board. Those are just the major ones. Millage rate is, it's one, okay, one mill, quotes, represents tax liability of $1 per 1,000 of assessed property value. And you can see the math there. So if you have a house that fair market value is 100,000, the assessed value is 40%, which is 40,000. If the city's millage rate is 6.5 mils per 1,000, then you can see the tax is $260 on that property. The city's portion would be that. Your county mills and the school board mills would account for more of that.
What's a mill worth?
$1 per 1,000.
What's a mill worth in city of Villarica? Should be about $400,000 or so?
I don't know if it's quite that much, but yes, you're talking in the hundreds of thousands.
Let's see, the rollback is about a half a mill, amounts to $300,000, so.
About $600,000.
Okay, keep going. This is what was published in the paper. This is our five-year history and the current. So you can see our, our net digest is $482 million. And then our net millage rate is 6.5, is what we've published. So you can see the total tax that that'll bring in is just over $3 million. This is an increase of 300,000 in revenue from the prior year. Okay. The next slide is also what we published. This is where we start talking about the rollback rate. But you can see that we're required to publish that we have, that we have published this, a property tax rate increase of 7.47%. And that is the rollback rate, which I'll talk about in a minute, compared to the, the proposed rate of 6.5, which we published. I should say the placeholder rate of what we published.
And this is not based on final data, this is based on preliminary data?
Okay. And right there, there's another calculation. You can see the placeholder rate of 6.5 compared to the rollback rate of 6.048. That increase of, for someone's on a $100,000 property would be $45. Next, that's where we talk about the rollback rate. So Georgia law requires that we calculate the tax rate that would produce the same amount of total revenue on the current year's digest if the last year's millage rate had been, would have produced with, if there had been no reassessments. The 2016 budget adopted by the city of Villarica council requires the millage rate higher than the rollback millage rate. So the millage rate in 2015 was 6.5. In order to produce that same revenue on the digest, the rate would need to be rolled back to 6.048. And that's where I did the calculation. That's where the published notice says that we have an increase of 7.47%. Any questions, or does the state want to add anything?
So the question becomes, does the city want to gobble up this extra revenue of 300,000 plus dollars? Do they want to roll it back and negate the increase for the ones that were reassessed inside the city? Or do we want to do something in the middle?
I.
Share it between the city and the, and the property owner?
Madam Mayor? With, with, with respect to the mayor pro temp, I wouldn't use the word gobble up. When, when this council said its 2016 budget, that budget was with an increase. So when the CFO says that your current budget requires a additional revenue, that's because your charter requires you to set your budget and then you set your millage rate. Now, because you've set your budget in December for the 2016 year, you have already established what you have budgeted for in your 2016 budget. Then, well into the year, when we have already started to spend the bulk of the property tax and other revenue sources for the services that you all requested that we provide in the budget, you then will get a tax digest. And then, of course, that kicks off our millage rate process. So if you had a budget last year of $10, but then you set a budget the following year for $12, you're going to have to absorb either the $2 out of reserves, you have to cut services, salaries, pension benefits, or something. Now, there's a couple of critical things that, that are at play here. And I know that when our CFO pointed out where water rates are, and you're like, oh, wow, we're going to be able to get in enough to cover that 500,000. What he failed to tell you, not deliberately or otherwise, was that, was you still have all that added expense that you're going to lose money on because you consistently lose money in your enterprise funds as a city. So what has been historically happening, and what I addressed the council last year was, is that consistently, you really have to decide where you want to be with your water sewer and sanitation rates because you are taking property taxes and every year going out with your shovel and, and taking a chunk and using that money to pay your bond, offset your losses in your funds. Now, the reason that that is troublesome and should be troublesome is that, let's say, and I, I'm gonna use Mayor Pro Temp Carter as an example. Let's say that you own 20 properties and you're a real estate mogul.
I wish.
Okay, exactly. But, but let's say that you did, and you could. You just gotta go out and buy them. Buy them real fast, buy it by the meeting.
You'll allow me some.
At the next meeting. So let's say that you own 20 properties. And then you are in the rental business. You're, you're financially wealthy, solid, everything. You got that rental income coming in. You're being taxed on your property tax for services that your residents are getting. And you're simply just having to pay it back proportionally based on whatever those properties are assessed. I would think that you would much rather those tenants be paying full freight of whatever the cost of those services were. So that is one upside down. Second, when, when the 2016 budget was done, I'll remind you that at, at the beginning of the budget, there was a memo to the. um, I'll remind you that at, at the beginning of the budget, uh, there was a, a memo to the council um, that laid out, these are all the budgetary things that staff wants you to consider in the 2016 budget. Um, and as part of that process, um, we painstakingly went through the process of telling you that, uh, you have a financial policy that we cannot meet budgetarily, which is you have a requirement that, that, that as a policy to put in money into your bond reserve and grow that so that you can, um, make your notes and so that your overall bond rating stays where it is so that the cost of your wastewater treatment plant bonds don't become a very costly item for the taxpayers or is borne on the, the backs of the taxpayers. So there are other things at play. Now, um, today during lunch, um, uh, the former mayor had stopped in and, um, we, we had a casual chat about, um, the budget. And for instance, he asked some questions. He's like, what's the new rate going to be? Well, we don't know because we are in a situation where we expect another set of data tomorrow. And if that data comes from Carroll County, we'll recalculate. But we do not expect that to be a very large, um, a gap beyond what we have now. There are some things that we have been alerted to. For instance, in the data we have right now, it does not take into count on the Carroll County side, any tax abatements. The Department of Revenue had instructed the tax commissioners that they had to take into account, um, tax abatements. So when we create the rollback, there is about $109,000, give or take, a property tax that we have been billing for and we have been getting, but we will not get in 2016 or onward because they were not taking into account the abatements when they produce the rollback data. So we know that that's going to change when we rerun the numbers. The second thing is that we are waiting for that five o'clock today to find out whether or not we are in an 8% or greater appeal status um, with the county on those properties that were reassessed where the property owners elected to reassess. Um, so we're waiting for that, um, because that will trigger potentially another direction for the city. I'm hoping that doesn't come to that, and that is that temporary collection order that we have discussed. Um, when we do get that data, um, we'll go ahead because we're dealing with a, uh, a complete digest and a certified digest from Douglas County for which we've had now for almost two months. But because of this mass reassessment, um, it's been very complicated for everybody in Carroll County to, um, uh, be able to get all of the data, um, uh, to us and the other cities in a timely basis. Now, the other question that had come in with, from the former mayor was, um, well, uh, what about the supposed, um, uh, windfall, if you will, um, that, that you said the word gobble up? Um, turkey gobble, gobble.
It is getting close to Thanksgiving.
Exactly. So, so I explained that there are things in budgets, um, that you don't foresee that generally you'll use reserves for, but in some cases, it's really at the discretion of the council as to what does the governing body want to do? Does they, you know? So, so we have, as, as administration, been in a cost-cutting mode and have been consistently working to keep our numbers, um, where they are because we knew that potentially there were going to be some changes um, that we were going to have to, um, uh, do a dance with, if you will. Um, for instance, um, just as, um, a couple of recollections, um, the, um, 2015 L-MIG. When we did the budget, um, we had budgeted for 100% of the 2015 L-MIG. Um, but, um, again, this was, we started the budget process about the same time last year. Um, we were not aware that the city had not filed for the 2015 L-MIG funds. So although it made its way through the budget and, and I brought that out in the budget process, um, we went to bat. We, we aggressively fought for the L-MIG money, but we only got 70% of what was budgeted, which means that your 30%, you know, you're never going to materialize that amount. Um, we knew that healthcare costs with the, um, uh, community ratings, uh, we, we sort of stayed a year last year, um, but we knew that they were coming in and going to take effect this year, and they did. So as you know, when we went through renewals painstakingly, uh, there was a double-digit increase. And what that meant was that we had to make some serious decisions, um, uh, with our budget and then also internally administratively. Um, and, and, um, that was about a 300,000, give or take, impact, um, uh, over a 12-month period. So we have worked to absorb 50% of that in this budget year, but next year, we're going to have to budget for that increase, um, from the start. Um, the IT services, uh, again, when we did the budget, we budgeted IT services on our historical trend. What we did not anticipate was that in, um, uh, January, um, uh, being informed that, um, uh, our provider was going to, uh, no longer provide, um, IT services. And that forced us immediately to start looking for another provider. And when I tell you we were getting a bargain as a city, um, that's an understatement. The water plant, um, when you look at the fact that you are, uh, this year, um, and our CFO is here, so correct me if I'm wrong, but really going to, uh, basically, uh, pretend like it's a Vegas, uh, a craps table where you, you go out and pull the dye off the table. Uh, you're talking about between 800 to a million dollars, um, give or take, um, at the end of the year that you'll have to scrape off to make ends meet on your bond payments and the differentials of your actual cost in an enterprise fund that should be actually sending money back the other way to take care of, you know, increases and incremental. Your, your enterprise funds are going the wrong way. Uh, so in the water plant, when you're down for eight months, you're buying 100% cost at the escalated cost, um, uh, give or take buying about 2 million gallons a day, whereas normally we produce 1.5. It's cheaper to produce that water, um, uh, than it is to buy it, but you're still losing money, uh, no matter how we're doing it with the current rates. Now, the reason that's also important is there's about 250 residents in Mirror Lake that are customers of WSA in Douglas County whose property taxes get scraped off as, as a percentage to pay the differential. Um, and if I was one of the 250, I wouldn't be really happy about that, knowing that we're really being taxed for something we're not getting back. There's also, if you recall, we had, um, chatted about the Department of Labor wage and hour changes that were coming. Um, and we, we, we had a lot of discussion going back and forth among some of the council members, um, uh, where they were making changes at the federal level, uh, for exempt versus non-exempt. And if you made less than a certain amount, you no longer could be a, um, exempt employee. Um, that, uh, we have 11 employees that are affected by those changes. And those changes go into effect December 1st, and we have to start to account for that as to how we're going to address that. And that means we either will be in an overtime situation or we're going to have to, uh, boost some salaries, uh, in order to keep those exempt employees exempt. There's also, of course, the unforeseen. Um, uh, you all appointed a judge and a judge pro tem. When we appointed the judge pro tem, um, uh, we were all great. We're going to save some money here. We'll work out, um, a compensation, um, uh, that we thought was pretty nominal. And this judge will be able to fill in whenever the judge isn't here and then occasionally, you know, at, at the, um, the jail. Well, from administrative side, we've been hit, you know, with, um, uh, news about a case in Calhoun which says that if an incarcerated individual, uh, is on a bondable fence, and by the way, all of your offenses in this courtroom are bondable, um, and they do not have the wherewithal or means to bond out, you cannot hold them, I believe it's, uh, any longer than 72 hours. Um, and that as a judicial system, you now actually have to either address them within three days and solve that case, um, uh, or you are now in non-compliance. So now that Judge Pro Tem, who we thought was going to be a savings for having our officers transport prisoners back and forth between the jail, is now a jail, um, a judge, if you will, and is having to provide services to the city, um, effective almost immediately, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And that's going to basically cost the city $18,000. Um, your favorite topic, uh, reverse angle parking. Um, when I was going through things, um, that wasn't a budgeted experiment, if you will. Um, we absorbed the cost, but that was about $10,000. But that painting was temporary with all that in the signage. Um, this council now has to decide, um, is it working? Is it not working? Does it want to keep the reverse angle parking? Um, and based on what you tell us and give us guidance in the next couple of months, will determine either way, um, the paving, the, and, and, and striping and work that will have to occur on that road. Now, the interesting thing is, the reason I mentioned striping is because, um, uh, Wednesday night, um, uh, the, um, contractor for the State Department of Transportation, for instance, started its paving, uh, on, uh, Bankhead Highway. When it gets down to downtown, uh, all striping, uh, that is not on the actual USMDA um, is, uh, full freight on the back of the city. So, um, we'll be, uh, incurring, um, cost, um, uh, as they go through with that project. The list sort of can go on and on. Budgets are ebbs and flows. We move money where we need to, to cover markers um, throughout the year. Um, but when you all, um, get the, um, uh, data and we will provide it to you and put it on the web as soon as we have those updated numbers, I don't expect the variance to be, um, uh, uh, what is called a, a, um, sort of stopgap of 3%. If, if the variance was more than 3%, we would have to basically, um, turn the dial and start the whole process all over. I don't expect those kinds of numbers. And talking to the tax commissioners in both counties, we don't expect that trigger to happen. Um, so we're sitting and waiting for how many final appeals? Are we within the 8% or not? If we're less than 8%, we're good. We can move forward on a vote on Tuesday. Um, once I get the consolidation sheets, I'll work with our CFO. We'll update, um, our, um, uh, numbers. Again, I don't expect drastic changes. We'll then publish them. Um, and then this council will have to decide on Tuesday, um, after one additional, um, uh, final hearing, um, which we added, um, uh, for transparency purposes, um, as to what your millage rate, um, will or should be. So I just want the governing body to take that into account um, when you all, um, decide amongst yourselves, um, what you think is in the best interest of the city and the, uh, and its taxpayers.
Okay. Um, what we're, what you're asking us to do is, is hit the homeowner with a 7.5% property tax increase. And at the same time, we're going to have to correct a bunch of enterprise funds, as you pointed out. So we're going to be hitting them with a water and sewer increase rate somewhere along the way to correct those funds. I think we're going to pile on the homeowner, unless we can do something a little less drastic with this millage rate. So, back to you.
That's all I have? Can I say the, the increase? So if your property, if your property assessment didn't change much, then a 6.5 mil on your property that you had last year and a 6.5 mil on your property this year, that's still the same amount of tax for that individual.
Right. With the ones that got reassessed, they're going to get hit with a property tax increase.
All right, next on the agenda is the community development. Number one is the Motor City Garage.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Um, we have, um, a, a guest with us if, um, if behooves the council. Um, uh, this is a, um, a sort of unusual situation in that it's not a variance, it's not a conditional use. Um, but to, uh, uh, just sort of summarize for the council, what we have here is, um, Mr. Brian Borick is, um, uh, here with us. He's an existing, um, a business owner, uh, in Douglas County uh, with a establishment over in Douglasville. Um, he would like to relocate his business to, uh, the City of Villarica um, in an area that is, uh, zoned for light industrial. Um, the specific area is actually, um, uh, over in, um, Mayor Pro Tem Carter's district, uh, over off Hunter Industrial Drive. Um, however, uh, when he came in and made application and presented everything, uh, he was actually denied an occupational, uh, tax license uh, because, um, staff, uh, had determined that he is engaged in automobile and truck sales. Now, in, uh, the light industrial, uh, zoning that the, um, uh, council has given what is called permitted or conditional uses, if you, uh, look in your, um, uh, council handbooks, uh, you actually have this grid that I'm sure you have seen multiple times that dictates out what is a permitted use and then what's a conditional use. A permitted means that we permit that specific use in that zoning category. Conditional use means that you can make application, go through the Planning and Zoning Commission process, um, get a recommendation, uh, for approval or denial, and then come to this, uh, council and make a determination on whether or not, yea or nay, uh, we're okay with that. In this instance, um, uh, automobile and truck sales, um, is not a permitted or conditional use. Um, however, his business, um, is, is a little different than, say, a used car dealership. Um, so, uh, after a careful, uh, conversation, uh, with Mr. Borick and also some consultation with staff and also our city attorney, um, I thought best, um, and our city attorney also, um, thought best, that, um, uh, we come to the council and ask, uh, for an interpretation of what it meant by automobile and truck sales, comma, service and repair. Um, in this instance, there, there is a property, we're right next door. Um, they are engaged in light industrial. They're, they're repairing, um, a large equipment. Uh, this gentleman wants to, uh, be able to secure automobiles on behalf of individuals, uh, recondition them, repair them, fix them up, and then, of course, sell them. Um, at some point, um, he may have some, um, uh, vehicles, uh, for sale. Um, uh, so in some respects, you could say, well, you know, am I engaged in automobile and truck sales? Um, in my discussion with them, it's like, well, the staff interpretation is if you buy or sell one vehicle and that's your business, you're engaged. Um, but then the question is, um, it's in light industrial. Uh, is that really the interpretation of, of, uh, is staff really properly interpreting that? Um, and, and only the council really can give guidance to the staff as to what really is the intent. So you're under no obligation to, uh, hear from Mr. Borick. He knows that. He knows that this is a work session. He knows that Tuesday would be the only time. Normally, he would have public comment on this. Um, I, I informed him that and said if he wanted to be here, it would be at the, um, uh, discretion of, of the council. Um, uh, however, um, I do want to point out that, um, uh, today, at close of business, is his last day that he can sign and engage in this lease that he has on the table. Um, so for that reason, um, I felt best to go ahead and preface that with the information given to council. So back to you, Madam Mayor.
I, I got a question. Um, if he keeps all the cars inside the building and he calls himself the Motor City Garage, uh, does that mean he's not like a used car salesman? He's not advertising cars for sale on the outside? Does that make it legal or what?
Um, interesting enough, he did, um, attend the, um, Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission meeting. And, um, um, uh, I had prefaced, uh, to, uh, that commission that this gentleman and this topic would be on. topic would be on the agenda. They did elect to engage with Mr. Borck, and one of the questions was, you know, would at any time you have a car or vehicle out front with a for-sale sign on it in the lot? The answer was affirmative. You know, I have told Mr. Borck that, you know, if the interpretation doesn't go in his favor, one option is, basically, do all the reconditioning and storage at this location and do the sales outside the city limit, and another property that you properly have license to do that, and that may be a way. But, you know, again, it's gonna be whether or not the council thinks that this business type is acceptable under, because from staff perspective, and you have to understand, there is an agent of this body. You all dictate zoning code. So anyone that comes in and says, you know, yes, I buy and sell cars, I'm a licensed dealer, they don't give broker's license, I'm a dealer, they look at and says, well, automobile and truck sales in that zoning code is not allowed. So it's not a matter of if he keeps them all inside the building or not, staff is interpreting that you're buying and selling. So it really is for the council to give staff direction, and maybe we have to tweak some definitions. And I'm sure that our city attorney may have some additional guidance or input.
Yeah, when we first looked, when the question first came to me, I looked at it, and it's my belief that the requirement that automobile sales be placed in commercial zones was addressed more towards the Von Rich Fords and the Liberty Chevrolets, retail sales of vehicles. Based on conversations, based on reading the documents, conversations they had with Mr. Borck's attorney, his business is really geared towards fixing up cars. It is not primarily retail sales at all. It's repair, refurbishing vehicles, and it's really the type of activity, the type that we want to have in a light industrial zone, as opposed to a commercial zone. So rather than having him try and rezone the property in the commercial, which would be spot zoning, I think it's appropriate for this council just to determine that what he's planning to do there is a compatible use in a light industrial zone.
So do we have to change the table here, or what?
No, I don't think you have to.
We just have to decide that that fits in, huh?
I don't really think you're being called on to make a zoning decision. It's within the power of the staff just to determine that this does fit under our zone. And I think that it was enough of a question here, that they thought it appropriate to bring it to the council to make that final decision. I believe that it is a compatible use.
Even if he said the car?
Even though, as Mr. Millon said, he may sell a car in the process of it, that's not the primary purpose of the business, as I understand it. I just want to hear from him, but the primary purpose is not to retail sale of vehicles.
As I read through this, it looked to me like he was keeping his cars inside the building and not putting them out on the lot like a used car lot.
It just broke to my, I mean, you know, when I listened to it and looked at it, I thought about J and J Garage up here. They was wanting to sell some cars that they had, I guess, fixed up, and maybe the people didn't come by to get them, and they were denied. So, you know, that's just something that come to my mind when we were talking about this, and whether he got them inside the building or outside, if he gonna sell them, they're still a sale, isn't it?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think-
I mean, if he sells them.
If you've got them inside your building, and you're not holding yourself out to be a car lot, and you're not inviting people to come in and wander around amongst a bunch of cars to look at them, I don't know that the primary purpose of your business is as a used-
A retail sale lot. I don't see it as a used car lot myself. What happens when a garage, like say, J and J, what happens when they get some cars into fixing, and people change their mind, don't want to fix them?
They voted not-
What do they do with those cars?
Because they wanted to put them out for sale.
I don't remember that.
And it was voted down. So, you know, that was just in my mind.
If you want to put them outside and create a used car lot, I can understand, well, that'd be a problem. You'd turn yourself into a used car lot. But if you have some cars inside that you're repairing, and for people that want, some people want to bring a car to them to get it repaired, and I don't see a problem with that inside the building.
Okay. But we're not voting in that.
I'm just-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So it just gives us-
I'm in agreement with the attorney.
Yeah, it just gives us food for thought.
Staff's gonna require some guidance on this, because obviously, if this was put to a vote on Tuesday, it's gonna disenfranchise the applicant, because they have a deadline for the lease, unfortunately. And so-
You're missing one person, it's critical, unfortunately.
It's, again, as the city attorney said, that for staff, this one's critical enough to say, is it or is it not? At this point, staff has denied the applicant, but will need guidance from the city council before we feel confident of going ahead and issuing an occupational tax license. You do have Ms. Coleman, you know, always like to throw her under the bus. She's done the community development, planning and zoning, both on a professional consulting basis, well, I guess consulting is professional, but basically is full-time in consulting, and is probably your foremost expert, other than maybe your city attorney on zoning.
What was P and Z's decision?
This is not a P and Z issue.
Okay, okay.
It would not have gone before them.
As a representative of that area, I don't, I agree with the city attorney, I don't have a problem with it.
I need heat, man.
I don't know if you have a question.
Oh, oh.
No.
And did you want to hear from the applicant? If not, I just need a consensus of what y'all are thinking, that does it meet yea or nay?
Have you got Leslie's? Have you talked to her about it?
I chatted with her a bit. In fact, you were there. She didn't give us the yea or nay one way or another.
Yeah, I'll go on record as saying, I think we would be on legal ground to deny an occupational tax if it had been on this basis.
I don't have a problem with that interpretation of what this business is.
Let's, oh, never do that legal thing, would you say it now?
Yeah, let me see if I can say it.
No, I just did it on set.
Based on my review of this, I think the city would be having a weak legal position if we told him he could not put his business where he wants to put it.
But it would be-
But you should, you should, at least from my review, I would allow him to do it.
With stipulations?
I think that it probably wouldn't hurt to get an agreement from him that there's some sort of limitation, that it's not to turn into a used car lot, and that, you know, maybe we can negotiate some type of maximum number of vehicles that could be outside that appear to be for sale.
Yeah, that would be the only thing I would-
Why don't we ask him what his plan is in that?
Maybe on the address?
This is Mr. Borck.
Very quickly. I just came from work, I do apologize for my informal appearance.
Okay.
Okay, you look nice in the Charlie.
Well, I wanted to dress appropriately, I was not able to do so. But it's not my intention to open up a used retail car lot in the city of Villarica. I'm more of a broker than a dealer, but for state licensing purposes, there is no difference for, between a broker and a car dealer, a used motor vehicle dealer. So that's the only license that the state will recognize and issue. That's what I have. Most of the sales that I would be doing would be showing the cars inside, if I'm able to do that. We would park our, the employees' cars outside of the building, and if a client wanted to look at the car out in the sun, in the sunlight, I'd pull the car out. And with the approval of the city and the municipality, I'd like to be able to deliver that car as a dealer, instead of having a split, two separate offices, because it's a lot more expensive, obviously. So the ability to do that would be most appreciated. I don't mind putting up a stipulation of, I don't know-
So you're not gonna be parking cars outside with for-sales sounds on them?
Yes, sir, I'm not.
Flags waving and all that stuff?
But, but under the code, if I would have a client show up, no, exactly, the flags waving, that's what I don't want to do. That's not what I'm interested in doing. Because if I wanted to do that, I'd find a used car lot that I could lease or purchase and put my, in a very conspicuous used car lot, like we all see. That's what I would do. Now, if I grow and I get bigger, eventually that may happen, and that would not be a bad thing, but not for this location. This location, it's centrally located conveniently off I-20. It's about five miles from my home. I live on North Hilton Road in, on Incorporated Douglas County, with a Villarica address, and the rent is very affordable, and that's the reasons that I'd like to occupy this. But my intent is to operate a very low-key, very well-manicured business, not a bunch of cars hanging out with oil stains that would contribute to the way that the property looks, so that it doesn't look well-kept, and that's not my intent at all. I don't mind stipulating to that, to the municipality and to the officers, if that's a condition, and I would appreciate that.
Mr. Borck?
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned stipulations. What stipulations would be acceptable to you as a business owner? Because I think that will help the council and guide the council.
I mean, I could say no more than one car outside the building at any given time for delivery to a customer. That's very, I mean, that's very acceptable to me. I, you know, and I don't want to turn into a used car lot either, that's not the intent here. But as I came in today, I got some really good news that I might be featured on a national, on a national car show, featuring my business with the moniker Villarica, Georgia underneath.
So I've got a seventy-one Grand Torino that needs to be repaired. I'm gonna bring it to you, you're gonna repair it, and I'm gonna come pay you and drive it up.
And you're gonna-
He doesn't really have a Torino.
I've got a seventy-one Grand Torino, sport, and needs repair. Backseat, and maybe a little bodywork. Bring it to you, you're gonna fix it, and I'm gonna come pay you, and then drive it up.
I think he's asking about your business model.
He doesn't have a car.
Actually, that would be more of a repair facility. That would be under the lines of a repair facility.
Now you see where I'm coming from.
I certainly do, and I'm, my repair and reconditioning of the vehicles would be more in the lines to sell the vehicle and not to repair the vehicle, because if, what I would tell you is take it over to Phil Beavers across the way, and Phil would be the guy to do the job there.
I understand, but when you say that you're gonna recondition, and the difference between recondition and repair is real thin line.
Yes, sir, it is. And the differentiation would be that I am not a repair facility. We will conduct repairs on the property with the intent to sell the vehicle at some point.
Fair enough.
And that includes the consignment of vehicles. You brought me that car, and you would ask me to consign that vehicle and sell that vehicle for you. I would be authorized to do so under the code as a used motor vehicle dealer.
That answers my question.
Is that good or bad? Is that good for you or bad for you?
Oh, yes, great.
I do want to point out, before, for full clarity, so your automobile and truck sales and service and repair of automobile and truck sales is an acceptable use under a category, but not in this one. So the question is on your stipulations, I'll be the first to say, one is pretty narrow from a staff perspective, because it's like, if we go by and we have an agreement and I see two vehicles out there, then it's like, well, hold it, you're a violation. So I heard, you know, he's like, one, and I think that's just too restrictive, but, you know, he offered that up, but from a staff perspective, I think it's too restrictive. Your city attorney may have guidance. And then the question then is on the service and repair, would that also be a stipulation that you would agree that you're not doing service and repair on vehicles?
As a sole, as a sole provider of repair services, I mean, I would, I would reapproach the council for approval and another, I don't know if I'd have to ask for another occupational tax certificate under a different code. Somebody brought, somebody brought me a car to fix it.
That zone is okay for car repair.
Exactly, he's got it going on right next door, because-
There's nothing wrong with having automobile and truck repair in that location. It's a permitted zone.
Yeah, that was why I sort of went along the question of the line, because I just wanted clarity for the council member, that the next one under, the highlighted one in your book, says automobile repair and body shop. So as long as you all are comfortable and you can work out the number of vehicles, city attorney could work up the agreement, we could give them a temporary thirty-day occupational license while you work out that agreement, and then staff can move forward with it.
I think our only concern was that he would turn into a used car lot, have cars that there with prices on them, and-
No intention of doing that, sir. And as a, as a member of the community, and may I, may I say that the resources that this community has done with policing up unscrupulous businesses, parading as car lots, I appreciate the positive enforcement that this community does for that, and that is not my intent, nor would it be my intent to do that.
It sounds like a good deal to me.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
So, Mr. Millon, you want to know how we feel about it, so you-
Exactly, and a number, a number of vehicles would be good. Your maximum number of vehicles would be good, because the city attorney's got to write up an agreement.
Where you think the max ought to be, Mr. Attorney? Where you think a maximum ought to be?
Oh, I would say maybe four.
Four? Does that sound good?
That's an overnight.
Outside.
Outside.
Outside, which I think is very stipulated.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good?
We can go along with it.
What do you think, Charlie?
I said we can go along with it.
Okay, we got three consensuses.
Thank you.
No, we're not voting, we can't vote, no, we can't vote.
We got three opinions.
Say it okay?
We have gave him enough.
We have a consensus.
She didn't call for a vote.
We've gave him enough to go on.
I don't think it's a staff decision anyway, but we've got your guidance, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
That's the only way we can give it.
All right, item number two, alcohol license application, uncorked on Main Street.
Uncorked on Main already has an existing license. This is a request to add one additional individual to the license. This individual has gone to the police department, has already gone and met all requirements, and meets all for approval. However, because it is a change in the existing license, it requires approval by city council at its voting meeting.
Okay. All right, item number three.
Number three, okay. This one takes a little more explaining. All right, let's see, I have forwarded to the council two sets of comments that came in from members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that could not be at their meeting. They're simply just putting their information on record because they were not at the voting meeting, therefore it doesn't stand as part of the vote. In this case, one of them is from the chairman, and others from a member. Those two are split, one in favor, one against. That's sort of important to the next point. The next point is, is that when the case was heard, as you recall, it was a two-one in denial, it went to the council, the council referred it back to the planning and zoning because they did not have a full board, a full commission at its meeting. Well, guess what?
No full-
It didn't have a full commission again.
I saw a lot of out.
It had three members. So it has now voted yet again, two-one against. If you were to take in, unless those two were to change their position, if you were to- to count those in, it'd be a three-two against, but you can't count the vote. So, you have a two-one recommendation for denial, you have, um, the two additional that are one-one split, um, one-four, one again. So, again, if you counted them, it would be three-two denial. What we heard from the applicant is that they would pretty much prefer until the entire council was seated before they, um, uh, uh, request a, a decision by the council. Now, from a staff perspective, that's sort of kind of an issue, is that, um, you've already advertised and you really should have a decision within a timely basis, um, and, um, i- if you wait until, uh, say, November, December, uh, to rehear this, it could potentially be in January, um, and, and we would have to restart off the advertising and, um, the entire process again. So, this applicant has already paid for this. Uh, my recommendation is that, you know, the council at its Tuesday night, go ahead and make a decision, let that decision hand, uh, hold, and then if the applicant wants to come back, um, uh, after a full council was seated, um, then, um, so be it, and then if at that time the council wants to waive fees, it's so, you know, that's in the purview. That's the staff recommendation.
If, if we do it that way, though, and this council votes it down, I think there is a, a time period that has to pass before she can bring it back up. So, you could do essentially the same thing by, um, voting to table it with the instruction to the applicant, that she is gonna have to reapply and pay the fee again, so you can advertise again.
And not take a vote?
Yeah, and not vote, not deny it, but to, you know, she's, she's gonna either have to take the risk of revoting on it, denying it, and have to wait a year to come back to ask again, or she could ask you to simply table it with the instruction that, um, she have the opportunity to come back at a later time, repay the fee, re-advertise, and have a whole hearing for it for the council.
You know, I'm, I'm, I think the goat idea is a good deal, because I like to see goats eating up kutsu. I hate kutsu anyway. The chicken thing, mm, yeah, I'm not too crazy about the chicken thing.
Well, if you wait till December, January, or November, December, January, frost is gonna kill all of it anyways.
Yeah, I've not, I've not seen anything kill kutsu.
Kill it dead. Now, Mr.?
You've got the right to vote it up or down on Tuesday, and if you choose to do something other than that, you know, you don't know.
If it is a, if a two-two ta- uh, vote comes out, it's the same as a no vote.
A two-two vote on the council is a denial.
A two-two vote is a denial? I thought that was a no vote. I thought it had to take three.
If you don't have an affirmative vote, it has something that acts as a denial.
Like you take your children, don't say nothing to your children, that means go on.
It's the same thing as saying abstain, you know, that's not a vote for.
I went away.
Well, we, we voted on this at one of the meetings, and it was a two-two tie, and then we referred it back to, um...
Vote or just send it back?
Yeah.
So, then we vote.
So, how does that figure in?
You got, you can't keep sending it back.
I know, but how does that figure in? If that was a denial, wh- why, why did it proceed?
You did an immediate reconsideration?
You reconsidered it, you voted it back up to send it, to give the opportunity to send it back to the planning and zoning.
And then still didn't get a good vote. Didn't get a full.
Right on, adoption of...
No, we didn't, got the same thing.
All right, we go to number four, adoption and zoning map, it's a quick change.
We have a four?
Yeah, you actually do. Hey, you know, now I know why number four was in my book. Remember I asked you, it says, where's number four?
And I didn't know, we didn't have a number.
I don't have a four.
It's okay, it'll be, um, there for Tuesday. Um, we'll print out the, the big honkin' zoning map that we actually have on the wall, and, and we'll bring it to you, um, but, um, uh, we actually are, um, uh, we have to encompass all current changes, uh, to the zoning map and get it signed, um, so, um...
Even my agenda didn't have a four on it.
I know, that's why I looked at mine and said, where's number four? But I know I added four, and she put four in our book.
It's four, you got four.
So, I think...
But not in my book.
Uh-oh, you the mayor, you, you the mayor, you get four. We don't get four, us, us.
I write it in.
So, do you have the one that says four?
Yes.
Somebody's being treated special on this town.
Well, I mean, what can I say?
I'm telling you.
All right, well, we go on, we move on.
I'm responsible for that, because I know from the time we sent out the draft, then I sent the updated one, um, I had a, a tweak on it, so...
We will remember that.
Well, I printed mine off, thank you.
You keep remembering all those small things, because they're gonna add up, you're gonna be able to buy some coffee. Um, so, we'll get the zoning map, um, uh, out to you, and you can print it in, uh, you can tile print it on your printer in fifty pieces, but we'll bring the big, huge one, uh, to y'all.
You do have eleven by seventeen zoning map, or eight, eight and a half, eleven?
It, it's gonna fill that, like, area of the wall. It's that big one that, uh...
One for my book.
We'll, we'll, we'll do our best. We'll get you something. It's online, I mean, it, it's already there, so we'll get you something.
What line?
What line? The hotline, it's on the hotline, one-eight-hundred.
Only come, only line that you don't...
With your flip phone.
Oh, okay, let's do it, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, and receipt is Public Works by Mr. Pete Zaboni, Banoz.
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 Yeah, I'm gonna jump in on this one. This is, um, um, uh, your North Loop project. Um, if you go back to your, uh, twenty-ten agreement with, uh, Kagan Wood, there were specific services, um, that the city had contracted for. Um, in there was the soil survey, uh, services, uh, for the North Loop project. Now that the project has been staked and is actually moving forward, um, Kagan Wood has now done a competitive bid process, got the, uh, quotes on the soil survey, um, they are recommending, um, ECS Southwest LLC in the amount of sixty-four thousand five hundred. Um, uh, if you approve that on Tuesday, that will be the remainder of your contingency, um, for, um, uh, what you have left in council contingency. This was not budgeted, the reason it was not budgeted is, of course, um, we only learned earlier this year that we finally got the green light and the funding for the North Loop, so now that we got all the green lights, um, they're staking, they're doing the, um, appraisals for right-of-way, um, and, um, later this year, um, they'll do the, uh, soil samples, um, and start right-of-way acquisition this year and next year.
Did I hear you say you're gonna gobble up the rest of our contingency fund?
Yes, you heard gobble, gobble, gobble. Actually, it was goats, bah, and they're gonna eat all of that.
Well, now, let me, let me ask this question.
Yes, sir.
This is a contract for soil survey services. Are we gonna be glint siding somewhere down the road with the Tennessee opossum, or the Indiana bat, or the Louisiana gopher, or whatever else that Kagan Wood can come up with?
This is soil samples, this has nothing to do with...
I understand that, and we didn't, we didn't expect Indiana bats either.
I got one around my house, dude, in the fire beds.
Actually, actually, sir, if you go through the, uh, documents, um, the bats were in there.
Yeah, okay.
There's lots of things, you know, in here.
Weird, and it's just soil samples.
But hey, you're getting a ten million dollar road for about a million dollars.
This, nineteen sixty-five.
And I'm gonna put you on the superhighway yet.
Nineteen sixty-five was the first documentation I found about the North Loop. Well, yeah.
You know, I was born sixty-seven.
Oh, well.
All right, so much for this.
Okay.
So, what do you need us to do this, this, we just reading this, we've, we've gonna have to...
On Tuesday, you gotta vote, decide.
Yes.
Spend sixty-four and eighty thousand dollars.
All right.
What do they do with these soil samples?
What do they do?
What, what?
These are all, this is all part of your environmental stuff, um, core samples, everything, soil samples, um, the whole scope of work, and, and, and would you like them after they're done?
I mean, I'd like, what they gonna, what they gonna do, they gonna...
What they test for and all that stuff?
They gonna look at them and say, yeah, this is good.
Oh, yeah.
As long as you want, always.
Yep, compact soil. I've learned a lot about soil, you know, soil compacting and everything, I mean...
As long as the people that's doing this is not the same way they did the library.
No, 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 that had nothing to do with...
I'm just saying.
I still wanna know what's the purpose of, uh, paying sixty-four and eighty thousand dollars for soil samples, is just because it's a requirement?
All right, so, do this team, then Mr. Pete is standing up there patiently waiting, and he got...
Yeah, I don't know why he's standing up, because I was gonna, I was gonna talk about the grapple truck.
Number two to the grapple truck.
Did you get our, uh, email?
Yeah, of course I did, of course I did.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, in your book, um, and Charlie, Charlie's all groomed up here, so, so he'll talk to you about grapple trucks all day, but I'm gonna get him out of here quick.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Um, because he could be at home in his, uh, pajamas watching this. So, in your book, you have a two thousand...
Five o'clock, yeah.
Somewhere.
Oh, yeah, he's still on the clock. You, you want, you wanna delay this one to the end then? Keep him here?
No, go ahead.
All right, hey, I just will the council. So, um, this is, um, for the purchase of two thousand and five Freightliner Business Class M two-one-oh-six is a grapple truck. This is the second truck that we've tried to go after, um, but it has sold. Every time we've, like, gotten close enough, they sell too fast, and God bless Charlie, he spends all night on eBay and everything else looking for good deals. So, on Tuesday, what I'm going to ask is, there's roughly, from, when we looked at the, uh, uh, fixing up and or replacing the jet truck, um, I always love staff when they come up with creative ways they were able to fix it. That's in a capital item, it's not out of your M and O. So, there's about ninety thousand dollars left in there. What I'm gonna ask council to do on Tuesday is, we can continue to be in this situation every time, as, be- because the, nationwide, they don't come on, and this was a deal, this is normally an eighty thousand dollar truck. Boom, we lost it. There was another one that we were about to go after, which was about fifty thousand. Boom, we lost that. What I'd like to do is just go ahead and ask council to authorize up to, but not exceeding, but up to the ninety thousand, so that, um, if they bring me an acceptable truck that we can go negotiate, that we can immediately go ahead and purchase it. That does not mean we're going out and buying a ninety thousand dollar truck, kid you not. Um, the first one we looked at, I think, was forty-nine-five, this one was fifty-four-nine. If and when we get and can find a good deal, we wanna go after it aggressively. This way, in next year's budget, you know, again, we have capital money, this, this was put aside for capital money, this is not property taxes, I don't want folks to think that, but, um, this, um, it allows us to go ahead and purchase it as opposed to next year putting in the two trucks. So, it allows us to buy one, um, based off the repair we made versus replacement. Um, the one, uh, uh, big dump truck that we have now is pretty much kaput, you know, we gotta replace both of them, so I'm trying to offset this. This grapple truck, again, as I put in a memo to council, your staff is going out there, sometimes three people in a truck, um, picking up your bulk items, picking up the large, you know, um, um, limbs, everything. This would allow us to basically send one, maybe two folks out on a run, um, be able to very quickly, efficiently pick this up, not have to take all that time with manual labor, certainly, you know, not have potentials of injuries. Um, our folks are very familiar with this type truck, they already run, um, uh, two similar, so that was the whole goal process here, but this one's been sold, sold four days ago.
So, wait a minute, let me get this, get this right now. You want us to vote to give Charlie Davis a fifty-nine thousand dollars?
No, 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 me authorization. No, me authorization.
That's what I thought we was gonna do.
What, a fishing trip? This one, this one was down in West Palm Beach, the other one was, what, Savannah?
Yeah.
Both of those happen to be big water fishing areas, what's up with this?
This is one of Freightliner's factory reconditioning centers. They actually have two more there now, that they're both in the high eighty thousand, they're good.
You got a, you got a big old dump truck?
And they go through them front and back, rather than going out there and buying something that's just big and dead.
So, this is a big old dump truck, and it's got, uh, an arm on it that can...
About thirty foot reach.
Can reach out and pick stuff up and put it in, in the back end.
Now, there's a lot more uses than just the sanitation, for instance, this one would allowed us to, you know, do crush and run and a whole bunch of other things. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot more uses to it, um, with Flexbed. This, this particular dealer is the only one that can warranty, um, the, the older trucks. So, again, my goal on Tuesday, think about it, sleep on it, you know, is to authorize, um, the differential basically up to ninety thousand. You authorized in the past fencing, you know, you noticed that, you know, last year, I think you did up to sixty thousand, you know, fencing, and you saw I came in, you know, well under twenty thousand on that, so, um, so, so we're good stewards of the money, but if we don't have authorization, I won't be able to move. Um, this is not an emergency purchase, so I don't have authorization, this is not a sole source, don't have an authorization, you know.
So, you just wanna be able to shop and go when, when, if, if, if Charlie finds one?
This is the one that we tried to go after, sold four days ago.
This is not, this is not available anymore, okay.
It was four days ago.
Sold it four days ago.
I actually was down there, if, if, if I had an approval, I would've driven it back myself, but, um, but, um, yeah, I don't even have that.
We got that covered, okay, all right. I'm with three surplus.
All right, last but not least, since the, uh, Public Works Director is standing up there, this is an old two thousand, nineteen ninety-six Jeep Grand Cherokee, um, that they want to, uh, surplus and, um, put on gov deals, and then, um, uh, because it was bought with, um, uh, uh, uh...
Drug money.
Drug money, we wanna be able then to put that, uh, proceed whatever it does sell for, back into the drug money fund.
I don't know, we probably need to, to fix it since we have only one truck that we're using, uh, out in a covert operation, like Dodge truck.
What? Man, you just can't get good help anymore. My goodness.
I know, I'm gonna put piece tape over his mouth.
I'll bet you I can go to the judge and get a court order to use Verlin's truck in covert undercover operations, or we'll just go to our new dealership, who's gonna be over here, that's gonna have up to four cars, and we'll borrow his for, uh, and we'll put that in the agreement, we'll use those in drug deals.
Can we just bring the belt out there and set it up?
Oh, all right.
Throw him under the bus.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, uh, thank you, Pete.
And you, you drive.
All right, give it up for Pete.
Ashley, okay.
And, and Charlie, Charlie actually even got dressed and took a shower for this meeting.
Okay, we are D. First, we got Fullville Trailhead Project. You gonna deal with that?
And we gotta, we gotta hurry, 'cause we're gonna lose our, our attorney.
Right.
And, and look, a little, uh, we do...
We know how to get ahold of you, we got your phone number.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a request concerning the Fullville Trailhead Project. This is a recommendation for Hembry Consulting Contracting, excuse me, to move forward with the construction of the Trailhead Project. They were one of three respondents. On the bid that we put out, they came back with a final number of five hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. So, um, currently, the city, of course, has approved, um, or been awarded in a grant of half a million dollars, and the requirement is a twenty percent match. So, I don't know if you have any additional questions?
You got any questions? I don't, are these, are these local country?
Okay, um...
What should we gotta come up with?
Uh, twenty percent of the, uh...
Well, half a million.
Of the five hundred?
Five hundred thousand.
Fifty, sir.
And then, it was always said and, and stipulated that there were things over and above that were in the plans, that were not covered by the grant, that would always be on the back of the, um, uh, city, so, um, uh, so if we utilize and get approval for everything up So, um, uh, so if we utilize and get approval for everything up to the half million, you have to come up with twenty percent of that plus, plus, um, uh, the, uh, plus plus extras. Cause, um, one of the things I think the state said was the restroom octagon or complex or something like that, or something. The pavilion, there's something that they flagged as, um, non-reversible.
I'd have to go back and double check. I don't know if that was part of the earlier conversations, but everything that we have on the plans right now that have been approved.
It's the pavilion, yeah. Yeah, it's, I, I, I thought that's my recollection, um, when I had the, um, budgeting meeting last year. It's the pavilion. So, um, it's the pavilion that's on the city.
So, when would this start?
Like-
Right, so, approval, approval to, um, at the next meeting, we will send the notice to G dot. G dot will send back the, um, this final paperwork to sign off. We, the expectation is kicking off in October for construction. We have to, we have the environmental issue, so we have to wait.
Bats.
We have to wait concerning, concerning the bats, but October will be, uh, expected kickoff.
Now, so you know, sir, this money's actually in your budget, um, so you're actually covered in your budget on this. And then, um, you'll be getting money back, um, after the project's done.
How mu- how long is it gonna take to do the project?
We have a hundred and eighty days set, um, but it all depends on the weather. You know, you could have like last fall where it rained quite a bit. So, all of that's depending upon, mostly probably going to be dependent on weather.
We gotta have an engineer. We also gotta have soil samples out of it, too.
I bet, and we gotta check on bats.
Check on the bats. And the Indiana possum. Yes, they are some-
Don't forget the tadpoles.
Well, there's some areas out there that, that, that's gonna be some, some question.
Okay. So-
Move right along.
D two? D two is a separate but related item. This is for-
Did we do R two first?
That would be no. It's separate but related item. This is for the construction management, um, of the trail, uh, AMAC Foster Wheeler. Uh, we are recommending, um, that they be the construction management, uh, oversee construction management with the, uh, price amount of twenty-five thousand.
I do need engineer in there somewhere.
Has to be. And by the way, just, I just added her. She's a truckie. She picked up on that too fast.
Well, that's a lady for you. Okay, so those are the two items. We need to do, we need to do this on Tuesday. All right. E, governing, but zoning board of appeal, we consider Mr. Lawrence Kuz to be appointed to the zoning board of appeal.
You can tell he has an attention to detail. You know why? Who the heck puts their whole, full, complete name as his applicant name?
Well, that lets you know he's serious about-
Exactly, that's why, that's, that's why he's D T R, he said.
We have one open position, is that what we have?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, is it-
And I do know he does produce good okra.
Okay. All right. As I was saying, we have a zoning board of appeals application to be considered by Mr. Lawrence Larry Donald Kuz. So, uh, he'll be appointed. That's an open position.
Mine doesn't say Larry.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this, you're not, you're not privileged.
Mine does.
You just improved him, so.
Larry, Larry's the cable guy, isn't he?
Okay. All right, item number two is zoning board of appeals proposed bylaws.
All right, in your packet, Madam Mayor, is, um, a proposed zoning board of appeals bylaws. Um, each of your, um, uh, uh, board should have, uh, bylaws. Um, we certainly have worked with the Cemetery Committee. They have bylaws. Um, thanks to, um, Jody Mount head, heading that up. Um, the, um, Board of Zoning Appeals has created, um, a zoning board, uh, their bylaws, um, there before you. Um, we did, um, uh, have several meetings on this. I know our city attorney, um, was given a final version of the draft. Um, uh, so if he has any final input, but, um, other, if not, then, um, we would ask that you move it forward on, uh, Tuesday.
Okay. Our attorney said it looks fine to him, so we're gonna move right along. Item number three is intergovernmental agreement between the City of Villarica and Care City, Carroll City County Hospital Authority.
Yeah. Um, in short, this is, uh, Villarica, um, Tanner Medical. Um, i- if you recall, um, uh, many months ago, I, um, uh, came to this council and showed you some plans for, uh, sort of a, uh, a roundabout circle and some expansions of the hospital, and, um, uh, that, um, the hospital was looking at potentially, um, uh, shortening, um, uh, its, um, build out phase, um, uh, because it would encroach on, um, North Avenue. Um, it also, um, was wrestling with, um, uh, being able to, uh, you know, having to stop traffic on North Avenue in order to get, um, uh, folks from the helipad, uh, into the emergency room. So, um, uh, staff met with the hospital, and then we came back, made a presentation to council, and the council agreed to, um, uh, abandon that as a city street. Um, that kicked off phase two. Phase two is then, uh, you are no longer, um, a city street, um, so now you're ver- therefore property. Um, uh, we have worked with the hospital to negotiate a sale of that portion of North Avenue from Dallas Highway, uh, to, um, Old Stone Road. Um, so it's the portion that's already abutting the hospital on both sides. Um, they own all of the land on both sides. Um, they have agreed to pay the city a hundred thousand dollars, um, for that stretch of roadway, and then they will go ahead and improve that roadway and, uh, change the elevation, put in the roundabout, but it will be contiguous their property. If the council agrees, um, uh, then, um, and, and one of the reasons we were able to negotiate that amount is that, um, uh, I let them know that I was going to ask the council, and this is where Verlin's gonna, um, uh, excuse himself and go to the restroom. So, I was going to, um, uh, then ask the council to take that hundred thousand dollars and appropriate to the landscaping for the new library. The reason behind that is, is that when you all, um, approved the contract for the library, the architect had put in an estimate of twenty-five thousand dollars for landscaping. Um, when we put it out to bid, um, the figures actually were coming in between a hundred eleven, a hundred and eighteen thousand, somewhere along that. I don't remember the exact figure. But, um, there's no way we can landscape the library for the estimated twenty-five thousand that was put in the budget that the architect suggested. Um, and, um, so we have to come up with some money. So, since Tanner, um, uh, has been so generous, we approached them on the sale of the road, and they've agreed to sell it to the city for a hundred thousand. They haven't put any stipulations on it, but, um, I would like the council to consider then allowing that to be put, um, uh, into a fund so that we can landscape the library, which is why the library's not landscaped right now.
So, let me ask you this. You say in that little street from-
But the only-
Dallas Highway over to North Avenue, just that little street there?
Yeah, you and I drove it when we stopped at that intersection, um, and, and was, we're in that little parking lot. So, they own both sides. They own everything on Tanner Medical, and then across the street was their old helipad and their, um, parking lot. Um, so it's that stretch from Old Tanner right up to Dallas Highway sixty-one.
Yeah.
Um, that's the section that we would be selling, you all would be selling on behalf of the city for a hundred thousand to, um, uh, and then, and, and then they're actually legally known as the Carroll City County Hospital Authority, um, which, um, that is how, how they founded.
It looks to me like this agreement.
Was out backwards behind the hospital.
Or me?
I thought the helipad was out-
It was moved at, a- at one point, yes. They're looking with the plans to move it back to where it was. So that it's more efficient in order to get folks out right into their emergency, um, uh, area.
If I look at this thing, it looks like all we're doing is, um, agreeing to sell that section of North Avenue to Tanner. That's what the agreement is here, right?
Yeah, just the sale.
The other thing is a side item really that, um-
That I'd be asking you to do once, uh, once, once the agreement's approved.
Yeah, once it's approved.
So, basically, you would encompass that in your motion, hopefully.
So, North Avenue is gonna stop where? Right there.
I think once we get to a hundred thousand, we can decide what we would do with it, right?
I have a, I have a feeling that we'll probably end up having, this is gonna sound funny.
Oh, Lord, get it.
East North Avenue and West North Avenue, or North North Avenue, because unless you rename them, they're, they're both north, but there's a gap. It reminds me of Cape Coral, Florida. You'd be going along a street, and then there's a canal.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's, so you really have two sides, so, so we're probably gonna have to have like, we're gonna have to figure it out.
Okay.
But this is monopoly, and you do have a great opportunity, and I don't know how else other than reserve, we're gonna come up with landscaping funds. Though, um, though, though, um, the mayor pro tem has enough room on his property to open up a nursery and maybe get some greenhouses, and I can grow some stuff real quick.
You're gonna have to do a better job stopping the water from coming into the library.
We got that covered. We're working on that, too.
You don't like swimming pools in the library.
No, sir. We've had a, uh, engineering firm out there that's working with us, doing the grades, um, working with the contractor, everyone, but, yeah, um, that deluge we got, there shouldn't be any water going into the library.
Okay. Item number four, market study. Mr. Pike.
He must have been watching you on TV or on us.
And then he noticed I was sliding in right about now.
Notice he didn't bring any popcorn or food.
I didn't bring gifts, though.
He brought us some-
Bribs, bribes, bribes.
Well, I'm a city employee, so this doesn't constitute a bribe. This is, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't have to buy them, huh?
No.
There's no nothing before you that he needs right now.
You don't vote.
I was just gonna say, you have to vote, Elise. You have to vote then.
Oh, oh, okay.
Are you having sales?
Therefore, you're gonna discount.
Get your money.
It better not be a five finger discount.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and Council. I know I'm last on the agenda, so that means-
No, you're not.
Okay, well, I'm next to last. That means be really quick. Uh, before you, you have a, a request from the Downtown Development Authority, uh, to help with the, uh, funding of a downtown market study for a conference center hotel. If you will recall, one of the biggest projects, if not the biggest project that came out of the master plan was the development of a downtown hotel conference center, um, for the city of Villarica. Uh, once we unveiled the master plan in June, I instantly contacted, uh, Carroll Tomorrow, engaged their help with helping to move the process along. Uh, they had actually had some conversations with some developers, uh, they've done similar projects in other cities similar to ours. Uh, the main thing, the reoccurring theme that came back to us is that they're interested in the Villarica market, but they would not entertain it without first having a market study done. Uh, market study is pretty common. Uh, Douglas Field just finished a market study for their downtown. Uh, so, um, really, the first stage for us, really trying to entice a developer to look at Villarica to develop this project, is for us to get a market study to basically let us know where we are, uh, in the process. Let us know if the, it's even viable for us to have, um, the type of facility that we think we should have here. But it'll let us know, basically, if we are ready to move forward now, if it's something we need to wait two or three years. But the reality is that no serious developer is gonna even entertain, uh, this market without us first, first knowing what are the dynamics in the market. Uh, so what we've done is, uh, we first got a commitment from Georgia Power. They've contributed, they have committed five thousand dollars to this project. Uh, the DDA voted to contribute five thousand dollars. Uh, they then, uh, sent forward a request to this council for a commitment of five thousand dollars, and then we will, we've sent a similar request over to the Villarica Development Authority, uh, for additional five thousand dollars, which will get us in the twenty thousand dollar range that we need to actually, uh, hire the firm to actually do the market study for Villarica.
Okay. So, this is not the fourth high school in Athens doing this?
No. This is not the high school in Athens doing this.
I tell you, I don't know what's wrong with you there, but, I don't know. And we got another meeting to go. I don't know.
Woo!
Oh, I guess that's what it is. But thank you for your presentation, and we will-
No questions?
Y'all got any questions for Mr. Pike?
Excellent.
He said he, he said excuse him, so.
I, I let him get excused during the, uh, library one.
He's got a phone.
Oh, on his flip phone.
Leave him alone. So, thank you.
He's getting a download that came in from yesterday.
Okay.
He's next on the agenda.
All right. Maybe he left because he couldn't talk about dogs.
Distribute these.
What is this?
Well, he's about to discuss some stuff like-
I thought we got a package on that.
Oh, you got something emailed, but this is new and improved. This is even different. I was sitting down chatting with him today. After I listened to him on the radio.
Were you being interviewed? I thought I saw that out here.
No, not me. Why, I laughed with Verlin, cause, uh, oh, do you need another one?
No, I can look on the screen.
Here goes, surely you need one.
All right, Mr. Bass. It's in your court.
I had to get some things, um, taken care of.
He had to get his lottery numbers and bookie taken care of. What game are you going for this weekend?
Well, you heard somebody.
The one who scores the most points. That's the winner, anyway. Yeah, I, I think I'll let you have some, some information, and this is a discussion simply about, uh, pets. I was instructed to say pets rather than dogs, and our parts, uh, and then on the city property. Thoughts and feelings of, of some other folks beside me are, are gonna be important to this, but, the first story went that a man was, uh, almost attacked by a dog, a shepherd, German shepherd. Got a foot away from him with, uh, gnarling teeth and hair standing up on the back of his neck. I, I, I brought that to us a couple of months ago. He has come back to say the same thing. Now, I found that, that there's some other, uh, issues with that taking place as well. The questions that come to mind, and, and, uh, Mr. Miller and I have talked about this, and then as well as, as our attorney, the, uh, the issues that are, are coming about are the fact that we really can't do anything about it with the city, unless we vote some different things in. The county has a leash policy, uh, which we can follow. But there's, there's some issues that, that, you know, we may, need to make sure of what we're doing. Number one, you know, do we want animals at, at our, at Fourth of July? Do we want animals at the meal? Do we want animals around crowds that the city sponsors? I, I just want to hear some more comments and conversations from, from somebody other than, than me, and somebody that's yelling and screaming at me about not doing anything about it. So, that's the reason I asked this to be part of.
Was it true when Mr. Christian, the dog, the shepherd, actually attacked the lady?
No, it wasn't a lady. The lady had, was walking the dog at Goldust. The man approached from a different direction and got, the dog got within a foot of the, um, in length, five inches away from the man, snarling, and, and, uh, hair on the back of his neck was up. The, the lady actually pulled the dog to the side, and then, uh, I don't know if the guy went inside and, and talked to the people at Direct Department or what. Uh, he said he did. I don't know that. I have no idea. Supposedly happened one or two more times. Um, I just, I don't know. I, I think, I don't know that there is a correct answer. I don't know if there's a right answer. But, uh, there's gonna be something done about, you know, uh, being able to walk, uh, in the park without being accosted by a dog. Or by, and on the other hand, you ought to be able to walk in a park and carry your dog. You know, one of the things I said on the radio the other day is, I get tired of going out in the front yard and cleaning up in my front yard, because I have a neighbor that walks his dog down the street.
He likes your yard.
And likes my yard.
Thank you, Grace, bro.
Yeah, yes. I, it just, it's got to a point where, you know, if every neighbor does that, then we're all, it's issues. I, I don't know if there is a correct answer.
Why that guy leash with a poopy pickup bag attached to it?
There, there is one other law that, uh, I haven't seen floating around that I'll get you a copy of called Dangerous State Law on Dangerous and Vicious Dogs. Probably I'll look at that also, because it does give a definition of what a dangerous or vicious dog is, and it does give an opportunity if someone believes they're being attacked by a dangerous or vicious dog to call the animal control and have the owner put on notice that, you know, the dog has done something that's defined as being dangerous or vicious. And then if it continues to be taken that way, the animal control has the power to impound the dog, and whatever steps is necessary to deal with it.
I, I know that in the past, uh, having, uh, grandkids and going and watching those folks that, that playing soccer and baseball as well, people show up with various dogs, uh, happened to witness, looked to be maybe a ten or twelve year old small child, with a, a rock wilder, uh, on a leash, in, in, uh, in Fullville Park on one end of the soccer complex. On the other end of that field was another German shepherd that was controlled by a, uh, gentleman, probably my age. Neither one of those two folks could control the dogs if they got into it. And I, I guess what I'm doing now is trying to be, uh, proactive rather than reactive. I, I don't, I, I don't know if it's the right answer or not. I, I love my two dogs to death, but in the same respect, I don't want anybody harmed. harmed or or fearful for their life when they come to my house. Uh but, you know, these I noticed in here a while ago that that there's a a limit on a uh a leash in the parks not to exceed six foot. Well, now you have thirty-foot leashes on retract retractable uh operations that that you hold on to. I don't, you know, we're not gonna go out and measure a leash to to see if that's okay.
Totally varies dog to dog, 'cause I got a dog that barks until they get to you, and then he just jumps all over you and loves you. It's never attacked anybody.
I I've got I've got I've got a mastiff lives next door to me now. That bless his heart, he's sixteen months old, weighs a hundred and forty pounds, and he when he comes after you, he comes after you really hard and heavy, and then he'll lick you to death.
Yeah, but see if a person scared of the dog, regardless of how friendly he is.
You got next-door neighbors. You got I've got a church that's right behind right in their backyard, and they always have settings or things that happening outside uh on Sunday afternoons. Uh that's just to me a a an issue that that I don't know that we won't get involved with. But I, you know, do we need to tell those folks they can't do that? Uh tell the folks that owns the dog, they can't do that? I don't know the answer. I just I'm trying to, like I said, be proactive rather than reactive.
Well, I have a little input from the staff side. So uh.
Is that the fourth high school in Athens again?
There you go. So um. All right, so.
You have to start to lock up.
Best of staff.
We got some people need locking up for just a little while.
Better start looking for some more staff.
So um so 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 staff um staff did go out this morning proactively after um uh this complaint, you know, was escalated yesterday. Um uh you know, the the complaint did show up out at Goldust Park today. I um, you know, for whatever reason, he did not get out of his vehicle. Um uh he turned around and left. Um uh staff did observe the same woman that walks her dog out there. Um it's documented in the memo here what they observed, um that um this woman would um uh whenever approached um on the walkway, would grab the collar of the dog, exit the pathway, let the folks move, and then uh get back on the pathway and and continue to walk. And they observed her doing it multiple times, uh both with staff and not staff. Um so so as I said in the memo, and I said the same thing to to um uh Councilman Bass is, you know, I don't really have a he said, she said. I have a he said that, you know, and if he feels threatened, um what we have told staff just i- i- is indifferent. You know, that's a public, you know, pathway. Um they need to call nine-one-one. That's how you get animal control. That's how you get the police. Um uh communicated with the police chief. The police chief's agreed to, you know, have an officer go out there and step up patrols. Um you know, even on a nuisance dog, for instance, you know, um uh Mayor Pro Tem talks about, you know, barking dog. Even even the ordinance for which we have referenced in our code says that, you know, even as an ordinance, you have to go out there and and basically put them on notice first before you ever take action. Um you know, I have a dog, um you know, uh my dog is one of those that, you know, love and hug you too, but you know, a seventy-pound dog, you know, running at you to love and hug you, you know, is enough to intimidate, you know, the best of us. Um and, you know, when he pulls, you know, thank goodness that usually I can hold him. So I respect what the council member's saying is that, you know, if you're a pet owner, whether it's a dog, snake, rabbit, pig, whatever these folks got on leashes these days, 'cause it's everything, um that comes with responsibilities. Um so from from a staff perspective, you know, um I shared around um uh you know, page seventy-four out of the SOP out of uh Parks Facilities. Um so so we'll have our our staff look at our administrative rules, um see if we have to update any and and um, you know, make some changes. Um one thing I did hear, for instance, was um, you know, a particular dog going over to the tennis courts um and and being taken off leash in the tennis courts. That's unacceptable. Can't do that, you know. Um if pets are out on the the ball field, absolutely unacceptable. It's posted out here at the mill. Absolutely unacceptable. They don't allow in the mill. Um but that said, staff is also working, you know, to move forth on the uh master plan because we obviously are a pet-friendly uh community and do need places like um uh uh dog runs and cat runs and snake runs and rabbit runs and all those other things in order to facilitate. Um you know, I I drive all the way over to uh um that other city um that starts with a C, um because they have a dog park. Um and then when I go to the dog park, then I go to dog-friendly restaurants to eat. I'd much rather be spending that money in Villarica, um if I could go to the dog park and then go to, you know, uh eat downtown. So it's a compromise. We take, you know, any issue seriously. Um we we had one other issue uh reported on Mayor Lake that um they they had stated that, you know, also in that case, it was also a woman walking a dog. Um and um I think they were letting that one off leash or something. We copied the police department, but at the same point, we always tell them the same thing. Call nine-one-one. Staff at the Recreation Department is not equipped to engage with anybody. They're not law enforcement. They don't have any authority to engage. Um all they can do is say, hey, man, that's not the rules, and you probably ought to leave. That's the most. Um and and they haven't witnessed any of this gra- aggressive behavior firsthand, but they'll continue to monitor it. We'll look at the administrative rules, make sure that um uh they're up to speed, and um, you know, we'll try to um uh do some additional um social media and and newsletter posting um because um I I I for one hate anyone that does not um scoop up after the poop. Um and um, you know, so so I'll make sure that they get the scoop on the poop, and we put it in the newsletter.
Scoop on the poop.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of places you have to have the little bags, don't you, when you walk in the dog?
Yeah.
In the cities.
Well, you know, from a point, you know, one of the council members has asked, you know, for for a potential picnic table in in um, you know, the 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 uh park down here at the end of the uh the um um street. Um and so uh she was surprised when I said, well, okay, I'm gonna put in the budget, you know, a picnic table, a bench and 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 a dog station. She's like, why did I ask for a dog station? Well, if you're going to encourage folks to come into a park and sit down at a park bench, you know, down here because you want them to come out and eat, some folks may want to come out with their pet, too. And and so I want a little station, 'cause I, you know, when you look around, it's like I want a receptacle of where you're gonna put that poop. The reality is, if you have a dog, it's gonna happen. And 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 um.
As a as a poop collector, is what a dog station?
It it's a special, 'cause you don't wanna commingle it with everything else. But but basically, you know, I could show you a photo. It's it's a little garbage can, and you could have little baggies there, and you you it it encourages people to pick it up. Yes. I've been known at a staff meeting to accidentally realize and pull out a poop bag and realize, whoops, I came to the office with one in my pocket. I carry them in my glove box.
No further discussions. I'm moved. We we discontinued this and come back at six o'clock for the public. I made that motion.
All right. Yeah.
You didn't give a second. You can't.
Where are your cats?
You did.
You guys saved me, Mr. May. Yeah, I made the motion and I seconded it, too.
All right, Mr. Bark, go sign your uh lease and then come see us tomorrow.